We're live.
All right. If we go, we have to say anything. Thanks a lot on the money. First of all, welcome to those that are watching on live stream and also those in the gallery. On behalf of the Swan Hill Rural City Council, I acknowledge traditional custodians on the land on which we meet and pay our respects to their elders past and present. Could councillor Young read the prayer?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. We beseech you, Lord, that we may be granted wisdom, understanding and sincerity in purpose in the decisions we are called upon to make for the welfare and the people of the rural city of Swan Hill.
Amen. Please be seated. All right. We've got all our councillors present, so we've got no apologies. Our directors and officers present, we have the CEO, Mr Scott Barber sitting next to me. We have Barn Pratap, the Director of Corporate Services, beg your pardon. Miss Heather Green, Director of Development and Planning. Miss Leah Johnson, Director of infrastructure. And Camille Cowling, the Acting Director of Community and Cultural Services. Okay. Councillors, can I have a motion to confirm the minutes of the 15th of August and the unscheduled meeting on the 22nd of August? Thank you, councillor Young. Seconded councillor King, thank you. All those in favour? Thank you. Carrie. Do we have any disclosures of conflict of interest? Councillor King?
Yes, Mr Mayor. Two conflicts of interest in today's agenda, both in camera items. 9.2 relating to a tender for the provision of wet and dry hire of plant and equipment to council. As the owner of Swan Hill Hire, my business has made a submission for this tender. 9.6 relates to the building surveyor services provided by council. As a professional engineer registered with the Victorian Building Authority, I am from time to time engaged to provide consulting inspection services for private building surveyors. So I'll remove myself from the meeting for those two items.
Thank you. Do I have any other conflicts? None? All right, we'll move along. Joint letters and readings of petition. I do believe we have a petition that's in the agenda. Mr CEO.
Yes, Mr Mayor. We do have a petition. I'll take it as read and request to bring it back to a future council meeting.
Okay. Move councillor Jeffrey. Seconded. Councillor King, thank you. All in favour? Carrie.
Mayor, could I ask a question?
Yes.
In regards to that item, is it possible to move any motions in regards to that now at this meeting?
Well, we need to understand, normally it's a report come back to us and then we move motions at that point. We get some information, more information about it and after the motion is up, we research it first, do the research before we do motions.
Well, I prepared a motion, but I suppose just the timeliness of it.
Well, we have moved a motion, it's been moved and passed already, so.
I know, but I'm asking, can I move another one if it's not, if I haven't given?
Because we've already moved the motion.
Yeah.
In relation to that item. We have moved and passed a motion in relation to that item, so you can't pass, move another motion now in relation to that item.
I would have to give notice and do it the next meeting.
Yeah, the next meeting or whatever, yeah. Do a decision motion or whatever you want to do at a future time.
I just think in relation to the timeliness of action on that item and the things that they've asked for heading towards Christmas and I'll bring it up at the next briefing.
There has been discussion about those particular items of briefings before though, councillor Kelly as well. If you were in relation to it across our municipality. So, all right. Our next one, no public questions. And no one wants to open forum, no one in the gallery wants to open forum. We'll move straight on to the officers' reports. First one being.
We can't move the recommendations.
Sorry?
We can't move those recommendations.
Recommendations.
Yeah. We've actually done that one before, haven't we?
Didn't the, it was done there.
For the job.
The job for the letter, the petition.
Yep.
Okay. First report, 2.1, councillor's expense report. Mr Pratap, over here.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'll take this report as read. There is some correction, as pointed out by councillor Kelly earlier on. The paragraph under consultation leads, at the moment councillors have been provided with a summary report on the expenses that has been presented as the report has been presented in the past. But we have meant that the report is attached. So we'll correct that a little bit for the next report going forward. Mr Mayor, you'll read that the report on councillors' expenses are attached. The report is attached on page number 17. I'm happy to take some questions if there's any, Mr Mayor. Other than that, the recommendation is that the council note the contents of the report, which details councillor expenses for the period first January 2023 to 31st of March 2023. Any great questions, Mr Mayor?
Questions at all, councillors? Councillor Young.
When somebody wants to go to something, Mr Pratap, is a decision made about whether it's approved or not approved? Or do they just ask and then it's, they just go?
The councillors submit the forms.
Yep.
And with that, cash the invoices or receipts. The reimbursement is based on the receipts.
So there's not a criteria that they have to meet?
They, the expenses must be relevant to the council meetings. So if somebody is going for the councillor coffee and they're claiming mileage from their home to the venue of the councillor coffee, we will reimburse the mileage on the basis of the claim form submitted.
There is a policy in relation to councillor travel.
Yep.
And if every councillor wanted to go to a particular meeting, obviously there's got to be a decision made by the mayor and the CEO in relation to who should go.
Yep.
Because we can't all be going to everything all the time. But there is a budget set aside for councillors to go to these particular conferences at different times, yes.
So it's not per councillor or.
It's not per councillor, no.
Someone could use the whole lot.
But with all the government, we go to these meetings.
A whole lot of what?
A budget. There's only a certain amount of budget that the council has got. Question, Mr Pratap, just in relation to the mileage. What is that? Because I believe the councillors actually take council cars and they're not reimbursed. Why is the mileage? Look, I understand the mayor and myself have got a council car.
Yes.
So that's probably why it goes. But you look at councillor Kelly and King, they've got 12, round figures, 1,211 of mileage. Why would that go against them if they're using councillor cars?
They use their personal cars in this instance to travel to the council meeting in Melbourne.
I'll use that. The, my understanding, Mr Mayor, is that the, I think it says on the summary that I've, that I received, because I questioned my car mileage and the summary that I received was that council, a council car is charged at a mileage rate.
And that's what, that's what I thought, exactly.
Whether it's a, whether it's a private car or a council car, it is still charged at the, at the age of.
That was my understanding. I'm just making it clear that the councillors aren't actually getting that money. It's sort of coming out of a budget for a council car.
Correct.
Yeah, that's the point I made, for the benefit of the.
So there's no requirement that you check to see for.
Sorry?
There's no requirement that you check first to see for.
Oh, yeah, there is. You must, you must ask for a council car. It's part of the policy.
You take your own.
Yeah, exactly. You can take your own car initially. Councillor Kelly?
Well, one example for me is that I went to a land use planning workshop at the MAV in Melbourne and there was no car available, so I had to, I chose to take my own car because I couldn't use a council car. If recently I took the $10 train to a, to a, to a, an event in Melbourne that I went to. So if the train suits that, then that is a great option, $10, but sometimes it doesn't. And if you want to do something that's not on Zoom, then you don't really have a choice. I think that it's important for councillors to avail themselves of training, especially if they are new and need that training. So although it does seem like a lot of money, I think investing in councillors' training and knowledge makes for better councillors, so. But yeah, if perhaps we could always look at our policy and review it if it's seen to not, not suit or not be doing what it should do.
All right, okay.
But, Mr Pratap, I did ask you for a breakdown of my mileage.
Yes, we are working on it, luckily.
And perhaps every councillor may, may like that, not just the ones who ask.
Yeah, we will provide you with the next double base.
Because we put the, we put the expense forms in, but we don't always, you know, keep copy.
Yeah.
I should keep copy, but I don't always. But we do, we do know what we do, like we keep a record of the activities we do.
All right. Can I have a motion, councillors? Bearing in mind, remember that the actual report is for the period first of April to 30th of June.
Um, could I just?
You have another question?
Yeah. Could we, when we have these expenses like this in a spreadsheet, could we have like a running tally so that we can see maybe what councillors are spending in the, in the two periods before? So that we get kind of an annual, because it might look like some councillors have spent a lot there. But councillor King and I went to Canberra, so we would have had the fees for that conference included. Whereas across the year, I know that in the last period, you know, hardly did any, any trouble.
Yeah, we'll be happy to modify.
It fluctuates. Which councillors would understand, having had years of experience.
Councillor McKay?
Can I just ask a question as well and maybe ask for a bit more detail to put into this report? On page 55 in the related party disclosure section, there's, where are we?
Yeah. We're, we're on our first report.
Oh, okay, sorry, I've gone ahead. Apologies.
All right. Okay, can I have a motion, councillors? Yep. So the period, the dates are from the 1st of April to the 30th of June. As per your. All right. Seconded councillor Kelly. We suspect that, or councillor Jeffrey?
Yeah, absolutely. I think we, councillors requested this report through a public meeting in order to be a bit more transparent with the costs that are associated with, as I said, the allowance, travel, car mileage, provision of item equipment, et cetera. I will just point out that it's probably worth reflecting that definition of expenses, point three says car mileage. Cost of council provider vehicle from the mayor. It recognizes a private vehicle cost for councillors. It doesn't say anything about council cars being, something we need to reflect on that. My understanding of that. Car mileage, which is always avoided by a person at the equal to a meeting, it claimed right there is not a council car.
Yep.
Something that needs to be reflected on.
Understood. Councillor Kelly? We speak at all, you're seconding it in?
Oh, yeah. No, I think I've said enough, yeah.
All right. All right, so against all in favour?
I was going to say a word in favour as well.
Did you? I'll let you have a side, which side, councillor?
I was just going to say that I think that it also reflects, let us be conscious that, that, you know, expenses reflect, reflect activity and that councillors generally in our council are working hard to learn, consult with their community and represent the municipality well. It's a lot of responsibility and we all take it very seriously. It's quite a weighty responsibility. So I would like to extend my appreciation to all councillors who are working hard here. Thank you.
I'm sure everyone in the chamber is doing that.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. We couldn't cut past that, that's been carried on to the next report. It's the incremental adoption of our financial and performance statements. Mr Pratap?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This report is in principle the option of the financial statement and performance statement for 22, 23. This report has been presented to the auditors, has been audited and also has been endorsed by the audit and risk committee at the last meeting. Report has been authored by, authored by Mr Ash Free and Miss Helena. So I'll ask them to present their report and take questions. Thank you, Ash.
Any questions at all? Or did you want to say something?
Ash will run through his report.
I'll get run through it briefly if you'd like, Mr Mayor.
Well, if you'd like to quickly touch base, skip or have me just through.
Yeah, no, so we presented the report, just detailed the results for the year. So obviously we're reporting a $6.8 million result on our income statement. I'll just note that's inflated by the grants commission, which was received in advance for the 23, 24 year. But also backed out of that are grants of 5.4 million, which we've got some, some incomplete sort of obligations, I suppose. So because it gets to be concluded, that we can't recognise that income. Balance sheet shows a net assets of 664 million, which is 52 million increase from last year. Just for the whole, the note two, I think that's a good note that's been added to the report the last couple of years, which actually presents our financial result as compared to budget. So it's got some good notes in there just to give you some detail on the variances to and from the report. As Barn mentioned, we've gone through the audit for the month of August. Our audit firm are happy with the statements as they are right now. So they're just waiting for this incremental adoption from the council. Once they get that, they'll, we'll do management representation letters, they'll go to the auditor general's office and then we should get someone off the accounts from the auditor general's office. At this point in time, we've had chats with the auditors and there's nothing outstanding they want for us. And it seems like the auditor general is happy with the accounts as they've been presented. So there's nothing holding us up at this point. Do you want me to hold on here? Auditors in the report, we're just taking poses.
I think I'll take it as read, Mr Free.
Yeah, righto, beauty. Thank you.
Councillor Kelly?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions. It's in draft and in principle. There is an explanation in there about why it's in principle, but can you summarise why, why it's in principle and not?
So just, it goes to, so basically once it's signed off by councillors, being the accounts are true and correct, it'll then go to our audit, which will then pass on to the Victorian Auditor General's office to go, yes, the council have approved the accounts as they are right now, they're not expecting any changes to be made. These are our final accounts for the financial year.
Yeah, and it says that the audit and risk committee got the document on the 7th of September.
Yep.
Or possibly before that.
Yep.
And yet councillor only got it on the 15th. Councillor Orrs just wouldn't have minded having it a bit earlier. So had a bit more time to peruse and, and deal with it. Is that possible next time?
That's fine. But once, yeah, we obviously brought it to the audit risk committee a week earlier.
That's a timing issue.
Just if it's ready by the 7th, then could be, councillors could have it and have, have more time to. Councillors, you know, some of us, some of the councillors have other roles and jobs and things. So the longer we have with some documents, today's agenda's big. Anyway, that's a request, more than a question. The other one was number 13 on page 36. It says disposal of land assets no longer controlled by council. Could you explain what that means? So how do we, how do we sell something that we're not controlling? I don't quite understand that. It's, I think it's possibly page 232? No. I think it's page 36.
Page 15 of your document, Ash.
Yep, right. So that's, so we've had the land and buildings very well done during the 22, 23 year. So, you know, obviously every building and every land asset that we've got on our asset register gets assessed by the VA or an audit of that. So there's, I suppose there's little buildings or buildings that have been written down, things like that, that we just refuse to have them vary, basically to save us money, you know, for them to go around and actually look at it. We're going to be demolished or something a little like that. And that is the case for some things. Some things are pulled down and we're not actually aware of it until the VA actually goes in there trying to find it, sort of thing. So, but they're sort of generally little ones, but.
So they're things we own, but we don't control and sometimes we don't know if they're demolished.
Yeah. Yep. Or they're on our, they're on our register as being, you know, a shirt at a club sort of thing there and they've been removed.
Yep.
So a lot of cases there, the VA was finding that out once they ran there assessing it. There also was a bit of land at the back of the solar farm out here.
Memorial.
What was Black Wire, it was a sort of thing there. So there was two bits that were sold off. When that, we got rid of that part of land, we started to view that land on the register, so we had to dispose of that as well. So that, that's formed that behaviour pretty much.
Okay. Yep. And the other one was the provision of, the number 11 on that same page, the provision for doubtful debts relating to parking infringements and fines has increased above forecast.
Yeah. So as our value of outstanding fines and infringements increase, we raise the provision amount. So we sort of say, pretty much once they, you know, once they get over six months old, you know, a lot of it of us receiving those debts, you know, we sort of recognise it as being expensed with the provision, you know, matching it, sort of thing. So the provision increases as the, as the fines increase. um, the provision increases as the, as the fines increase, um, there's been, you know, mineral collection of outstanding debts, so, um, that's just sort of continued to increase over the bit, so.
So parking infringements and fines, so it's not just for parking, it's for other, other things?
Yeah, it can be for local laws, you know, those type of things also.
Yep, and lastly, number ten there, um, we didn't take into account, uh, needing to lease the McCray Street toilet?
Yeah.
Um.
Yeah, so when the budget was put together, um, we weren't made aware of, yeah, that building being leased, so it's obviously a new, new lease we've undertaken, so we've got to recognise the asset and the corresponding liability also.
Yep, and maternal child health, did we lease another building?
Yeah, on McCray Street. So the, the one ended.
Yep, thank you.
Yes, if you have a question. Um, just, um, Ash, in regard to, on page seventy-six, it says related party disclosure, uh, I just got a question, um, just myself on listed underneath, and because the, the one above with councillor King gives a bit more detail, but the one with me listed, it sort of makes it sound like I received the one thousand dollars when it went to an organisation called Slim, of which my sister is on the executive, so, um, I think that could be a bit more clear, that's all. Do you think that's, is that a reasonable request?
Uh.
Or is that how it's always pushed? I mean, I declared a conflict of, or a related party disclosure that she was on the, um, committee of that group?
Yeah.
And I'm a member, but, or attend meetings.
This, this one has actually been brought up with us, um, like since these, these accounts went to the audit committee, um, I'll look into that because I've got a feeling the audit came back and sort of said, oh, this might not be a related party disclosure.
Yes.
Double check that.
Yeah, I only did, it's just because it says on our form, if your family are on the executive of any committees, write that down, and at the time I withdrew from.
But even if I just, if it's just based on the legality, we're in a receiver and events of board one thousand dollars.
Yeah, and I wasn't, um, on the committee, in the previous years I'd been on the committee, so I withdrew from that item.
Yeah.
But, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, righto.
Are there any other questions, councillors? Councillor King?
Yeah, just, uh, on those statement of capital works, page thirty-two of the agenda pa, uh, yeah, page thirty-two of the report, oh, thirty-two of the agenda, sorry, um, just on infrastructure, sealed roads and unsealed roads, our expenditure is down significantly on both from the previous financial.
Sorry, there's two pages in.
There are pages in, okay, thank you. Oh, yes, it is two. Um, expenditure on sealed and unsealed roads is down significantly from the previous financial year, uh, is that just a timing issue? Um, more so than actual reduced expenditure, or is it actual reduced expenditure on capital works on those items?
I think it's more, um, just outstanding, um, projects that are yet to be completed, um, because I know there was a given funding for roads to recovery that's been carried forward, so that job obviously wasn't being able to be completed, um, and, yeah, I know we've carried forward some of the, some of the reselling money for the sealed roads also, so I think it's just a timing issue at this point. But that, like, we haven't, we didn't reduce the budget in that area at all.
Yeah. No, that's, that was my understanding, we didn't actually change it, we haven't reduced that in the budget. So that's, that's why I was asking whether it was a, just a timing of expenditure.
Yeah.
Issue.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
There's no more of the cameras to see, are you ready to go?
Yeah, just a comment with regard to getting these reports through to councillors any earlier. The Audit Risk Committee, Committee meeting was on the seventh of September, they're detailed minutes, it takes us a number of days to prepare them, run them back through the chair, so getting them through to councillors a little earlier is, is quite tricky.
Oh, okay, so we can't get this until they've seen it?
We've got to check in with the Chair of the Audit Risk, Risk Committee because we haven't had another meeting since to confirm the minutes, so we check with the Chair that the unconfirmed minutes are accurate, we've seen the Chair's opinion, and then we can put them in to report to council.
This document here?
The Audit Risk Committee minutes, which are behind this document here.
Oh.
We've got to actually write the minutes, go through, make sure we've written in principal support in the Audit Risk Committee minutes before we can then write a report to council.
Is the, is that in this annual financial report?
Yes, the annual financial report goes through the Audit and Risk Committee first on the seventh of September, as, as you've highlighted.
Mm-hmm.
We need to get their support, then we need to write the minutes, which, as you can see, the detailed minutes in the in camera session, we then have to get approval, then we can come to council, so it takes up a few days.
Yeah.
Councillor Kelly, you've got to stand.
Yeah, I didn't understand that.
Yeah, no, that's okay, I just, yeah, no, it's, it's sound like we're sitting on it, but we're working on that.
Yeah, you can understand, it's just, um, the more time, the better in such a, um, a meaty document like this.
Yep.
All right, is there any other questions in relation to our financial performance statements? If not, I'll ask for a motion.
I'll move motion.
Thank you, councillor Young, second, councillor Jeffrey, thank you, wish to speak to that councillor Young?
Um, yes, I'd like to, um, say thank you to the financial staff and Ashley for all the work that they've done on this. It's a big job to get all this organised, and I think there's changes being made in things, which probably makes it a little bit harder, so, so, um, congratulations on the job that you've done, and it gives us a very extensive look at all different areas right across the council, um, so thank you for that, and, um, I think if we continue in this way with the records and the changes that have been made, I think we'll end up with a really good system.
Councillor Jeffrey?
Yeah, just, uh, real right by councillor Young, thank you to the finance team for the work that do balancing the books as well as our risk and audit committee, um, for accounts, we'll be collecting just over thirty million in rights, and the other thirty-one, well, thirty roughly, um, council grants and operating costs and other revenue stands, so we, we do get, you know, three dollar amounts, another dollar is provided in grants or other contributions, so a lot of projects that we do, a lot of projects there, money put aside, saved up for, um, for our council, it's on our way to, you know, been debt free, I think it was two thousand and twenty-nine, top of the head, I think it was, enough for me, so well on the, well on the way to achieving that and support that, thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any other speakers for, or against? No speakers, I've put the motion on the paper. Carry it. Okay, our next report is our Swan Hill Tourism and Cultural Hub, Miss Green?
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Um, this report is to, uh, twofold, to advise councillors changes made to the plans for the cultural tourism hub at, to be located at the Pioneer Settlement, based on engagement with the community, key stakeholders, um, our Aboriginal community as well as council. Um, our list on page one hundred and seven, there is a list of thirteen, I think it goes over the page. Fourteen changes that have been made, um, to the plans to accommodate some of the issues raised, uh, by, in those forums, by all those stakeholders. So some really good, um, input from the community, from the Aboriginal community, and of course from council, um, to improving the design, um, of the building. I don't propose to go through all those changes, but happy to answer questions on those. The time is right now for us to make an application for a heritage permit with Heritage Victoria. Um, we have also incorporated, um, feedback from Heritage Victoria in, in the design, when I say we, the architects, you said royal we, um, and you'll see there on page one O eight, the, uh, community engagement that was carried out, um, over the last two months. Uh, we are behind time in, uh, making this application for the permit because of, um, the changes we've needed to make, uh, and we really want to, uh, get that application in hopefully by the end of this month to enable, hopefully to have a decision, best case before Christmas, likely to be not till after Christmas before we'll have a decision. Um, so the recommendation is that council approves the updated plans just for the purpose of the architects lodging the application for a permit with Heritage Victoria, doesn't mean that there can't be further changes made at a later date, and changes may be required based on Heritage Victoria's comments, and that we also thank publicly through the media, um, and, um, and through emails and that sort of thing, the community and key stakeholders for their interest, comments and suggestions to date in relation to this important project.
Questions, councillors? Um, I always have one question, Miss Green, in relation to the fireplace and chimney at the end of the building, that was never intended to be a smoking ceremony facility, it was there as, put there by my understanding, by a community member suggested that.
Um, it, it, you're right, not necess, not necessarily for smoking ceremonies, the Aboriginal community has a close affinity with, um, with fire and is very keen to have some sort of fireplace there, but that wasn't their suggestion, they've just endorsed it as, um, potentially being a place for, uh, fires to occur on cold days or for, um, if we had events on that wanted that, so it wouldn't be a lit fire every day, um, it would be lit for special occasions or particularly cold days. The, the main issue that we tried to do was open up the viewing line to the coach house, which, um, moving, moving the chimney to the east has enabled that to occur, and has also given us a four metre veranda at that end or covering, which is fantastic, the whole shade.
All right, thank you, Miss Green. Any other questions, councillors? Councillor Kelly?
I'm just trying to find what my questions were, uh. I think, yeah, no, that, um, just give me a second. Uh. If anyone else has a question, jump in.
We've got a very long meeting, councillor Kelly, so.
I know, I'm sorry.
I'm willing to move it as per recommendation, Mister Mayor.
All right, if there's no, no further questions?
I'd like to suggest an amendment.
Well, yeah, we haven't got a, we've got someone's gonna move a, just, we've got someone moves an emotion, we haven't got, can't move an amendment till a motion been put, all right? So if you've got a question, councillor Kelly, you found your questions?
Um, yeah, I think I am. So I'm trying to do it electronic and it's, my scrolling is taking time, sorry, um, I'm adapting to new technology. Um, it says, building design process is incorporating environmental and sustainability issues, could you, um, tell us what they are? Miss Green, uh, is, does that mean it's all electric or there's solar or what, what kind of things is it incorporating from your, from what you know?
So materials, certainly materials being used and the actual design, so the passive design to try and ensure, um, north facing, uh, making best of the north facing, um, aspect, um, in terms of, uh, solar, I'm, I'm pretty sure, and I do have the project managers sitting behind me who can confirm or deny, the, um, the brief that we gave the architects was to incorporate those, exactly those sorts of things, um, so electric, electric rather than, um, any other gas or anything else, um, um, what was the other thing you mentioned?
Oh, solar, and, and are those things done at this stage or are they kind of later?
They'll be later in detailed design, incorporated into detailed.
As long as it's, um, adaptable for those, those things, yeah.
Well, Eric, councillor Kelly?
Does Mister?
Yes, uh, we have advice over architect to design as the efficient videos.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you. Yeah, that's great, thank you.
Okay, councillor King, you wish to move a motion?
Yeah, I'll move as per recommendation, Mister Mayor.
Do I have a second for that motion?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, councillor Young.
I'd like to move an amendment.
You'd like to move an amendment, what's your amendment, councillor McKay?
That the architect discuss with First Nations Reference Group and be guided by them about their needs in regard to the most suitable built feature for smoking ceremonies, and then strongly consider removing the chimney, elevated fireplace and clock that are included in the plans to the north-east section of the building, due to concerns around their lack of functionality and blocking lines of sight to the river and coach house.
Um, councillor McKay, I don't see that as an amendment, that's a completely new motion. What we are seeking, the motion at the moment is to approve the updated plan, you're asking to change the plans, which is not an amendment.
Well, it's just one aspect, just to consider one aspect, which we did give in feedback that we thought was maybe dysfunctional.
Yeah, look, I'm not going to accept that as an amendment, it's, you say it's one aspect, your, your motion is actually changing the intent of this motion. So we've, we've approved the motion, so I won't accept that as an amendment.
Can I ask a question?
You can ask a question.
Um, so is it correct that these plans will go to Heritage Victoria, which I'm happy for, but they can be altered later in slight ways?
You're correct.
Right, so that is confirmed in this meeting, that small alterations can take place, thank you.
Miss Green said that prior.
I know, but it's often nice to re-emphasise, thank you.
All right, okay, so we've got a move and a second of the motion, wish to speak to that councillor King?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mister Mayor, um, we all know that this project has been a very long drawn out process, and what started as a visionary project for Swan Hill, a feature, two-storey building overlooking the river, combining the Pioneer Settlement, entrance, tourist information centre, art gallery, dedicated Aboriginal and cultural heritage area and entertainment spaces, is no longer. We now have a, a project, which is two separate buildings, uh, that we need to staff and maintain, that is approximately three years behind the original project schedule, has tighter controls due to heritage listing, and will now cost around forty percent more to construct due to the delays, meaning we will be forced to either reduce the scope of the project to make budget, provide additional funds, or a combination of both of those things. Uh, it's time to get on with it. Let's support the plans, apply for the Heritage Vic permit, so we may be able to get this project completed sometime in twenty twenty-five, if we're lucky, thank you.
Councillor Young? Um, thank you, um, for that, Stuart, um, I believe you've covered a lot of very relevant material to do with this motion. Um, this, uh, project has been going for so many years, um, two different terms of council and then before that as well, and now we've got to a point where, as Miss Green said, we need to avoid delays, and we need to just get on with it and get it going, um, so that we can get it done within the timeline, or else we're going to go over again, um, so I just want to say I'd like to see it move ahead and go.
Thank you. Any other speakers for, yep, councillor Moore?
Thank you, uh, Mister Mayor, um, yeah, look, two thousand, December two thousand and eighteen, we, uh, going through for this project, it's almost five years on, um, I'm very tired of, uh, all the delays myself, I'm very disappointed, deeply, deeply disappointed about the outcome, um, we had the chance to have something visionary for Swan Hill. Um, yeah, I agree with councillor King, let's get on with it, uh, further delays, we'll be designing a matchbox before we're finished, uh, for any more, you know, type increases in costs, we don't want to have to build any of them, um, so yes, let's go with it, councillor King.
Any other speakers for or against? Yep, councillor Kelly?
Um, I'm really happy with the, um, the way that the architect has listened to all the input, I think all the changes that are listed there are really excellent and, um, really thank the architect and, um, council officers for being so receptive to, um, the community's input, uh, I think it's going to turn out to be a, an really incredible asset for the community, um, uh, looking at those plans that are there now, the internal, um, layout is excellent, um, the way that they've added, um, north facing windows, um, they've tried to create shade, um, everything, nearly everything has been taken care of and, um, I'm just thrilled with the way it's looking. I am really happy with, um, that they've taken into account an arborist's recommendation to protect, um, that really significant tree, I hope that that kind of care continues, um, and particularly in the construction phase. Um, I take the other councillors', um, points of view that it is very difficult in these budgetary, um, financial times where it isn't looking great for, um, costings and availability, so it, um, it will require a bit of luck, um, to turn out the way we want it, but, um, the plans are there, there's, um, social licence is there, and there's been a lot of people invested. And there's been a lot of people invest their time looking at this and having a say on it. Um, so, you know, apart from the rocky journey, I think there could be, um, a really delightful outcome. That can only be added to over the coming years and for, um, the people coming to our, our town that are really thrilled with the Pioneer Settlement and the asset that it's going to be. Added to that, the other projects that are coming up. So, um, all the best for the next stages.
Thank you, councillor Kelly. Do I have any other speakers? No one spoke against motion, put all, put the motion all in favour? Carry it. Yeah, I'd like to specifically thank all the community that have been involved right throughout this whole process, putting it over many years for the input they've had in relation to it. All right, our next one, Swan Hill Australia Day and beyond. Ms Green?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Uh, councillors will recall, uh, this year's Australia Day ceremony was different to many in the past. Um, where we held it in the town hall, um, including the citizenship ceremony and the, uh, giving out of awards followed by a morning tea. Um, with some community input and, uh, some discussion with council informally. Uh, it was, it's proposed that this coming, uh, so twenty twenty four Australia Day, we look at, um, doing something different again, which is to have that ceremonial component held the night before Australia Day, just as it does for the Australian of the Year awards in Canberra is held the night before Australia Day. Uh, Bendigo and many other councils are doing the same thing. Um, it's, it's recommended that we trial that for twenty twenty four. Holding an event at the town hall, uh, the night before Australia Day. Followed by, on, on Australia Day, the small towns still, um, carrying on their celebration with support from council. Uh, to, um, to ensure that it is celebrated. Um, this has also come, um, to respect our Aboriginal community as well, who, many of whom find Australia Day, um, a difficult time for them because of the impact of colonization. Um, but the local community, Aboriginal community has said they would like to continue to be involved in educating our community about those sorts of things which could happen on Australia Day or around Australia Day. And certainly want to participate in the celebration the night before Australia Day. Where, um, they may be, um, recipients of Australia Day awards and which they could come and receive them. Um, so the recommendation is that we, um, that we trial a new, um, approach to celebrating Australia Day. By having the night before award ceremony at the town, Swan Hill Town Hall. We have, um, citizenship ceremony in Robben Vale during the day of the twenty fifth. Small towns continue to undertake their celebrations on Australia Day. And First Nations led displays may seek funding to assist costs with the funding, um, to come from the Australia Day allocation. Uh, that's been one suggestion made by that community, uh, that they may wish to pursue. Um, the recommendations also include a communications plan explaining the reasons for council making this decision. That we also review, um, the Australia Day celebrations after the event. Um, for twenty twenty four to look for the future. And we continue to support the First Nation community and its involvement in the events. Um, so that's the recommendation. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Questions, councillor McKay?
I have a question. Um, Ms Green, in relation to our, um, historical, like, over the last forty or so years, event that we had in the park. Um, was that, were we having difficulty running that with the same, in the same way that we did in any cases?
Yes, so.
So this, you go on, please expand.
I was just going to say, it was run by a volunteer committee who did a fabulous job over twenty four years. Um, but they'd started to, um, uh, run out of steam. Um, and needed a lot of assistance from council. Um, couldn't, we couldn't recruit more volunteers to help with that. Quite an intensive, um, labor-intensive, uh, way of, um, putting on an event. And, um, uh, yeah, so they couldn't continue.
Yes, so, 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 so in a way, partly this adapt, adaptation is a way of us managing to celebrate as well as for the other issues going on, it's also was becoming increasingly difficult to
Yep.
hold that large event with fencing and a whole lot of other requirements.
Yes.
So it's not that council refusing or declining to do that, it's just proven to be difficult to get off the ground.
Very true.
Thank you, in pretty basic language, obviously.
Thank you. Any other questions, all councillors? I'll ask for motion?
Oh, sorry, I have a question.
There's councillor Kelly?
It says that, um, under consultation on page one twenty six. It says that there was some online consultation. Um, does that mean? Um, I, I've got here, when, when was that, when was that consultation?
I, I think that was through our Let's Talk portal following this year's Australia Day celebration. To see, uh, well, in fact, I shouldn't say, I think, I know it was, um, following that to see, get feedback on, um, the support or otherwise for the event that was held in the town hall.
Yep. Thank you. That's my only question, ma'am.
All right, there's no further questions. I'll ask for motion, councillors. Councillor Kelly?
I'll move, um, as written.
As per recommendation, yes, can I have a second for that? Councillor Jeffrey, thank you. Wish to speak to that councillor Kelly?
Yes, um, I think this is, um, a good, a good idea and good proposal. Um, I can imagine, um, a night award ceremony will be well attended. Um, it's often very hot in January, so an evening, um, ceremony I think is, um, suitable. Um, I think that the, um, aspirations and, um, discussion around the appropriateness of, of, um, changing things we do in regards to, um, the requests of the community. And being sensitive to, um, to ways of thinking. I think this covers that. Um, we need to move with the times, we need to, um, be more respectful to, um, the sections of community that do find, um, celebrations on the, on the, um, twenty fifth difficult. Um, and I think that this is more in line with the pillars of, um, our council plan in regards to leadership and, uh, community wellbeing. So, um, yeah, I'm, I'm think that this is a good, possibly you could call it a compromise, but it's, I think more of it is moving with the times, um, being appropriate and celebrating all the different parts of our community, um, respectfully. And, uh, I think it's quite innovative. And I think the community will, will see it that way. Uh, and uh, I, I'm looking forward to, um, trialling this and seeing how it goes. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Jeffrey?
Uh, I just want to support the, uh, tourism that have been taken here with our Australia Day events. Uh, acknowledging our citizen, lone citizen events of the year and other, um, student awards that are awarded during our award ceremony. Um, it's really important for our municipality, but not stepping away from the fact that, you know, there's a lot of angst around the twenty sixth of January, but that's a federal issue and I don't see that as us as a council, we're not making the decision of what we, or what our community should or shouldn't celebrate. The previous events for the Swan Hill, which this mainly impacts was, uh, the Riverside event that was getting less and less people attending. But it was costing more and more white paper money, um, with heavy support of quality to get up alive. So that's why if the difficulties of that, we've moved to, to this new format. And we're still supporting us old towns with undertaking their own Australia Day events that actually took on the twenty sixth of January as well. So I think it's a progressive way forward and a way that allows us to continue to celebrate our citizens regardless of your, your culture or whether, how long you've been in Australia, where you've come from and how long you've been here. I think it's just, uh, a good way to, to, to reward and award our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers for, eh, councillor McKay?
Oh, yes, I'm happy to speak in favour of this motion. I think it gives us a lot of practical options as well. For example, uh, quite a few of us have tried to attend several events on Australia Day at once and it's a logistical nightmare getting across the municipality. So, um, there's that part of it, especially for the mayor and deputy mayor. Um, but also as councillor Kelly mentioned, I think we could have a beautiful ceremony here at the town hall in pleasant weather with everyone participating. But the other great thing is that people from the small towns who perhaps win Australia Day awards and maybe the Australian of the Year award for the municipality will be able to celebrate right in their community. Whereas I have been at ceremonies in the past where they've been in town and had to hot foot out of here and get out to their town where the, the breakfast is almost over. So we've got a lot of logistical, um, benefits. And as we stated with great, um, thanks and gratitude to the committee who was running the Riverside Park event. That it was becoming difficult and didn't seem to have the legs to continue on. So we're just adapting to that reality. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
Yeah, I'd just like to say thank you to volunteer organisations and I unfortunately think there's going to be more things that are going to have to be reorganised because if you look at the age group, the Rotary, um, the Lions, BPW. And a lot of those organisations is, they're, it's an aging population. Uh, they've done an amazing job, um, and the thing about the generations that are coming on now is that they haven't got the time um, to be able to do a lot of those things. So I think it's going to be a change that goes across a lot of areas.
Thank you, councillor Young. Any other speakers? We know the speakers against motion, put the motion all in favour? Carry it. All right, our next report is the Murray River Tourism Board, Murray Regional Tourism Board. Ms Green?
Thank you, Miss Mayor. Um, the, the purpose of this report is to, uh, recommend the signing of a new MOU or memorandum of understanding for membership of the Murray Regional Tourism Board. Um, in addition, uh, the report outlines the process being undertaken by the state government to transition tourism boards to visitor experience partnerships. And under this new state government model, it's anticipated that, uh, funding for tourism will be limited to those partnerships. Um, and individual councils won't be, um, able to, uh, gain funding without being a member of some sort of regional approach to tourism. The Murray Regional Tourism Board has been in existence for about thirteen years. Council was one of the, uh, initial members, um, back in two thousand and ten. And has continued to benefit by being a member of, um, this regional approach to tourism. Um, we certainly have had a lot of support with the Our Place development as an example. Um, we get, um, a lot of support for, um, joint approaches to marketing for our municipality. Uh, councillors may remember when we had, um, now I'm going to get this wrong. Um, the cooking, um,
MasterChef.
MasterChef, actually councillor Jeffrey, MasterChef held at Pioneer Settlement. That was, um, all, at least initiated through the Tourism Board. Um, those sorts of things don't happen, um, if we try and go that alone. We just wouldn't have the, uh, ability to attract those sorts of things. Um, this report goes through the contrib, the financial contribution that is required each year. Um, and for this financial year, it's about thirty one thousand dollars. Um, significantly less than we would have to spend on marketing and, uh, like, should we try and do it ourselves? Um, it also coordinates, uh, digital, um, marketing, um, and maintains a digital platform for all tourism activities for our, for our, uh, tourism related businesses in town. The new MOU is largely the same as the previous one. It's, it's the same content but it's arranged differently and there is some more detail. Council's obligations continue with membership contribution with a three percent increase over three years. Um, and together with, uh, working well with the board and offices of the MRT. Um, the recommendation is that council continue to support the regional tourism brand by recommitting to the MRT by signing the new MOU. Um, and the state government is requiring commitment to that by the end of this year to ensure that funding continues to, to fund that board.
Okay, questions, all councillors? Councillor King?
Yes, um, under financial implications, uh, you said, so that our, our, uh, current financial contribution for this financial year, thirty one three eighty plus the digital platform. Um, since there'll be an annual contribution recorded, maybe it should yet to be determined. But you've said that it's a contribution then plus a three percent increase. So is, is that, I'm just trying to understand which it is.
Well, I thought I was going clear. Um, it's the thirty one thousand for this year and then three percent additional next year and the year after.
So it has been determined?
Yes, and it's, it's actually in the MOU.
Yeah, thank you. Just, yeah, because it says which is yet to be determined, so just a bit of a typo.
Sorry.
That's all.
Uh, when I wrote it, we hadn't got the new MOU, so I haven't, I haven't edited the report.
Got it, got it. Thank you. Thanks for the clarification.
Any other questions, all councillors? Councillor Kelly?
Um, when, when was, um, the Swan Hill Local Area Plan, um, developed? What, what year?
Um, it was during Covid that they carried out the engagement, um, and then we received it earlier this year.
Yeah, so it's dated February.
Yeah, I, I don't think we got it till some months after February though.
Yeah, and was it, um, a committee that did it or?
It was the, it was a consultant through MRT that, that prepared it. Um, but they did come here and I think councillor McKay was part of some of that engagement.
Okay.
But it was during Covid, so it was, I think it was almost one of the first periods of, um, lockdown because we're all a bit excited to be in a room together, remember?
Yeah.
Um, here at the town hall. But it certainly needs some tweaking, so we will bring that back to council. Uh, with some suggested changes for council's adoption of it.
Yeah, I had a couple, a couple of other questions. Um, how much do the board members of Murray, um, Regional Tourism get paid?
I think they're volunteer.
I think they're voluntary.
I reckon they're not, probably not, but yeah, I'm just, um.
Maybe not the chair, but I think the other members are volunteer.
Okay, um.
But I can certainly find out.
Yeah, thanks. And it says here that, um, under the supporting model, um, new partnerships will come with a supporting funding model and the region will attract five hundred ninety thousand. That's just the adding up of all the different regions.
That's the state government funding.
Okay, is that just a flat rate?
Yes.
Okay.
It may go up each year, but that's the initial contribution.
Yeah, um, and uh, that's all. Thank you.
No further questions, councillors? I'll ask for motion. Councillor King?
Uh, move as per recommendation.
Do I have a second for that at all? Councillor McKay, thank you. Wish to speak there, councillor King?
Uh, just briefly, I think this, um, Murray Regional Tourism highlights what we can achieve, uh, using a collaborative approach. So, um, the work that they do, um, the, uh, the tourism and, and other things that it, that it generate, generates through their work. Uh, we could not achieve, achieve on our own without obviously significant additional funds to what we're putting into Murray Regional Tourism. So the collaborative approach with other councils, we also have a similar tourist product as us to offer. Um, while still recognising that each area has its own uniqueness, will far outweigh what we could achieve on our own. We get better bang for our buck. Um, and, uh, as Ms Green has said, we also get a significant amount of funding, uh, from state government to, to work collaboratively together. So, uh, I believe we should continue to, we should sign the new. together. So I believe we should continue to, we should sign the new MOU and continue to support MRT. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor McKay?
Councillor King has said it all.
All right. Any other speakers? Yep, councillor Kelly?
Yeah, I think it's wonderful to be part of an organisation that is cross-border. It's actually not done very much. And I think I love the fact that they just take the border out of it. I think there should be more of that because I think the border gets in the way so much for so many parts of our society. So, yeah, I think, I hope that they can continue to have that cross-border approach. It is a river and both sides of the river contribute to the package of what we offer in regards to tourism. I do think that in regards to their ability to lobby, I think it would be great to, and I think it is part of the plan, but to continue to lobby the Victorian Government in regards to park management and more money for Parks Victoria, which is chronically underfunded and makes it so difficult to provide the level of conditions and service that tourists should be able to get in our parks. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Young?
Sorry. I just wanted to say, I believe since I've been on council, we've been connected into this organisation. And I think it's given us opportunities that would not have happened otherwise. And it reaches into areas that we would not go into. And it's brought a different slant on a lot of areas and brought a lot of visitors into our region. So I'm totally in favour of the recommendations.
Thank you. Do we have any other speakers? We have no speakers against the motion. Put the motion all in favour. Carry it. All right, our next one is the Audit and Risk Committee minutes, 7th of September. Mr Pratap?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The Audit and Risk Committee meeting minutes are presented in this report to the mayor and councillors. The list of items discussed are on page 214 and the top of page 25. I will take this report as read. There are two items that will be brought up in the camera items, which I will talk about that when we come to this one. Recommendation, Mr Mayor, that the council note the contents of this report.
Can I have a motion, councillors, in relation to that? Thank you, councillor Kelly. Second to councillor McKay. Who should speak there, all councillor Kelly?
Just to thank, oh, sorry.
You're not a Kelly. No.
No? All right. Councillor McKay?
Just to thank all the members of the audit committee and all our staff involved. Thank you.
Now, other speakers? I'll put the motion. All in favour? Carry it. All right. We've got decisions with transaction notification and asylum seal report. Councillors, there's no questions. I'll ask for a motion. I think it's being read as. No questions? Yeah, moved, councillor. Councillor Jeffrey, I was waiting there for a moment. Second to councillor King. Who should speak there, all councillor Jeffrey?
Oh, that's fine.
Councillor King?
Nothing yet.
I'll put the motion all in favour. Carry it. All right, moving into notices of motion.
Councillor, same place, Mr Mayor.
Oh, yeah, I have two. Thank you, councillor King. Where's that one? Electronics, we've got one too as well. Okay, so that's just a procedure matter for all the councillors' attendances at general items at assemblies. If there's no questions, I'll ask for a motion. Thank you, councillor McKay. Second to councillor King. Who should speak there, all councillor McKay?
No, no, no. Yeah, that's me. So I'm thinking about the next item.
Councillor King? Now, procedure, I'll put the motion all in favour.
Just on the 29th of August, I was on.
29th of August? You're an apology, really?
I was on a point, but I'm sorry.
All right, I will amend that accordingly.
Thank you.
Okay, so with that amendment, I'll put all the, put it in, all in favour. Carry it. All right, now we can do, move into notices of motion. The first one being from councillor McKay. Could you read your motion first?
Sure. The council accepts community input or conducts community consultation, a community consultation process regarding the proposed V Victorian Murray floodplain restoration project that are planned to be built within the River Redgun Parks in the Swan Hill Rural City Municipality.
Do I have a second to follow that motion? Councillor Kelly, thank you. Right, who should speak there, councillor McKay?
Can I alter that by a couple of words? Sorry, sorry, you second. I don't need to.
Oh, you've actually.
It doesn't matter. It's okay. Yeah, I'm going to read what I've written out for the record. The Victorian, and to enlighten any of us, the Victorian Murray floodplain restoration projects, VMFRP, are a suite of heavy engineering projects planned to be built on the floodplain within the Redgun Parks. These are areas of public lands, public land specifically reserved for the preservation of the environment and cultural heritage. These public areas are highly valued for recreation and enjoyment by their local communities and tourism by the wider Victorian population. In Swan Hill Rural City Council, VMFRP engineered projects are planned for Belsa Island, south of Robben Bar, Borough Creek between Pyangle and the Rung, and Nyer and Venifera Park. They will involve the building of extensive levee banks, creating huge change to the visual and ecological components of the parks, the building of regulators with pump stands on creeks where water flows into the floodplain when a higher river flows, and the removal of some barriers to water flow. Engineering projects have been implemented in the past at Barma Forest, Gumbau Island and Kunduk Paracuda as part of the Living Murray Programme. These projects and their implementation have not achieved the promoted environmental outcomes that were their justification. It is highly likely that they, and this approach to managing environmental water, may have contributed to a wide, a range of negative outcomes. Systemic and localised water quality is a concern related to the practice of watering isolated sites via pumps. It is recognised and understood that this method can cause localised cyanobacteria, live rain alky, and hypoxic water, blackwater events, and that this can impact water quality downstream. Any positive environmental results have been inconsistent and insignificant. Thus far, engineered and pumped watering of the small areas of floodplain have been quite good at overproducing redgums and very little else in terms of sustaining wildlife. It is of national environmental and economic significance that the only systemic-wide blackwater events known to the Murray Darling have occurred three times in the past 13 years. These blackwater events have caused hundreds of thousands of Murray cubs to die. The Murray crayfish population in this region declined by 80% following the 2011 blackwater event. In 2016, the Edwards Walkall system experienced a massive fish kills due to blackwater discharging through Kunduk Paracuda, Barma Forest, as well as other areas upstream. During the Murray Darling flood of 2122, this area of the Murray Darling was visited by fish deaths in the floodplain between Swan Hill and the Rung and horrifically Kangaroo Lake. The VMFRP appears to be a continuation of river management policies that have produced these catastrophic events. Managing the floodplain as a series of isolated irrigation bays, and I might say denying it water from natural flow events, is fraught with risk as they promote stagnation of water. There are also concerns that previously implemented projects, Kunduk Paracuda in particular, have altered the hydrology regionally, reducing some flow in some areas and increasing them in others. The basin plain is at a turning point. Continuing to do the same thing will get the same results, declining water quality and sporadic catastrophic fish and crayfish deaths. It is time to turn to our community and their historic cultural and traditional knowledge for guidance. The river communities between Swan Hill and Robben Bar have longstanding involvement and understanding of the river system in this region. They would appreciate having their input into the future management of the river system, the Redgun Parks, and in particularly the highly impactful VMFRP. By consulting with river communities, traditional owners, the fishermen and women of the region, tourism and recreational users, it is possible, and irrigators themselves, that we can improve on the management of the Murray Darling in this region. It is time to use our collective knowledge as river people to work together for better outcomes. Our citizens are tired of being directed by a bureaucracy disconnected from our communities and the river itself. It is a policy of council that consults the community on, it consults the community on issues that affect them, and appropriate that we source the wisdom of our citizens to inform our position. And I would hope for councillor support on this next motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Kelly?
Yeah, I support this motion because I think the best outcomes are gained from, from an ability to come from the grassroots or bottom up. And I think there's plenty of examples to show that. There's a group in Barham who have really showed the way with this. They, I'm forgetting their name, I think it's the Improvement Group. Anyway, what they've done is they've got together and talked locally, they've got funding and they've employed their own ecologists. And they've basically said to government, we're not just going to take what you want to do to our region, we're going to have an input and we're going to have a say using local knowledge, using the historical knowledge of farmers and fisherpeople and townspeople. And we're going to put that together, we're going to add it with the research that we're going to do. And we're going to come up with proposals for projects that can enhance our environment and create better outcomes for our community. So I think this type of motion that we've got here would be a process that could do something like that or lead to something like that, where we can get funding, can allow people to feel like they're heard before big changes and big, really permanent kind of changes happen in the community, to take away the historic values that people cherish, where they have their waterways and their lakes with water in them. We've got people in this community who really have not liked what's happened over the last decade or so with lack of water in lakes, lack of water in creeks. So having more of a say in that water management. We also have with these VMFRP the potential to have permanent changes, damage to historical sites, including heritage, traditional country and cultural heritage sites. We've got closure of the parks for up to a year, which will affect tourism. So we, you know, these, a previous councillor once said to me, there's going to be water wars. And I thought he was talking rubbish, but he wasn't. And, but if we're in a water war, we want to have, we want to make sure our community feel listened to. We've got coverage in The Guardian lately that shows a whole lot of different range of opinions and views, and people from Melbourne having their view, and people from Canberra. But we want to make sure that with this change.
Right there, councillor Kelly?
We have local people listened to. So I support this motion.
Any other questions at all, councillors?
Good question.
Eh, good question?
This is a VF, VMFRP project. So I just want to ask councillor McKay if the VMFRP did community consultation at any stage prior to the design or during this process?
Look, I could go into a detailed description of the sad process of community consultation that went on, although I'd rather not be so negative as that. However, what I will, what I have sat on a committee about it is that I move around the community a lot. And yes, people did attend. These projects have been, I suppose, in a design process over 10 or 15 years. The community always felt they were imposed from above. They would never have, river communities out there are perplexed and disgusted really about how they're being imposed upon a landscape, that they sort of understand how it works and don't know where such things have come from. Very, very, but I have sat on a community committee in regard to this project. And when myself and another committee member from Nyer said, so what happens with this feedback that's been put into this project? And they said, well, it's all written at the back of the report about how many consultations we did. But no one felt, that it was quite dispiriting to hear that nothing was really done to change or alter or publicly write down the concerns that have been brought up. So they, and also publicity campaigns were conducted like handing out flyers and having, you know, barbecues or, you know, presenting at markets about the projects. And they've been marketed as a floodplain restoration project. And all I'm asking is that, I don't really want to say what the committee will tell us, but I think it's, it would be very valuable for us to listen to people who've got years under their belt, who live in those communities to tell us what they think, who have good knowledge and understanding of the river system. Because we are at a point where they're either, I just, let's just start with the first step, and that's listening to the people who live there. So there has been some consultation undertaken, but has it been listened to? I would say not. But it's, those projects are planned for our region. So we should understand what the people who live there think of them.
All right, okay. Do we have any other speakers for or against the motion?
I'll speak for.
Speak for the motion?
Yeah. Thank you, councillor McKay, for bringing this. I've spoken with councillor McKay briefly on it. Happy to support the motion, the motion in terms of council undertaking a lips talk platform and get some feedback around community meetings concerns with the project. I'm not in favour of council doing a full-blown, full-blown community meetings and spending staff time, but happy to get some feedback around the concerns around the project with the report, come back to council and see if there are grounds for some letter to minister or letter back to the project team around the concerns and the impact that it will have on our community. So I'll support that. Thank you.
Are you any other speakers?
Councillor Moore?
Yep, councillor Moore. Here's the summary document regarding the floodplain restoration project, came with debate. I love the bit that they've been, restoration projects. There's been no amount of, any amount of community consultation. There's the list of community consultations in 20th of February, Robben Bar Library, 20th of February, Nyer Reg Reserve, da-da-da, Low Murray Ward, Beverystreet, Swan Hill, online. There was, there's also a web address for online submissions. There's been any amount of time and opportunity for the community, this duck community we keep hearing about, to actually make a submission. There's also any amount of information, flyers, surface water, groundwater fact sheets, cultural heritage and aspirations of First Nations peoples fact sheets, biodiversity fact sheets on the floodplain restoration of Venifera, Nyer, Borough Creek. There's been no amount of information out. It's been a huge amount of work done about that. The Mally Regional Catchment Management Authority identifies all the First Nations people in here. They're one of the key stakeholders of this. There's been that much consultation already. Waste of council officers' time and money. We've got, we've got roads we need to fix, we've got potholes we need to fix. And we're chasing something like this that's been going over and over and over, all on the back of massive water buybacks. It seems the more water we buy back, the worse the outcomes, the worse the fish kills. Water buyback started in 2008. We've had three, well, we've had massive fish kills ever since. You've got to wonder, is one connected to the other? So I just think it's a massive waste, really. It's been done to death. And wasting council's precious resources on something like this, I know, that might mean, you know, people feel very strongly about it. But at the end of the day, we've had three floods in the last, I think it's 11 or 12 years, natural floods. Where we go from here and whether you agree or not, with pumping water in and pumping water out, or letting it drain out, is another thing. But I think as far as council, all of council as a body going down this, and as a stakeholder, it's not land that we own. It's all in the jurisdictions of other people. And I think let the professionals like the Mally Catchment Management Authority are doing an excellent job of actually managing this, being one of the key stakeholders. Yeah, no, against it, a waste of time. Thank you. Councillor Moore? Do we have any other speakers?
Can I speak again?
As a second, I get another chance to speak?
No, you don't get another chance to speak.
No, you don't get another chance to speak. If, yep, councillor King?
Uh, yeah, I'll speak against the motion as well. Um, not as articulate as, or as many uh, handouts as what councillor, councillor Moore has. Um, and whilst I accept that the proposed um, SDL projects don't necessarily meet everyone's requirements, um, they are required as part of the water-saving projects, as part of the basin plan. Um, I think the, the motion, whilst the motion is related uh, to the VMFRP uh, project at, at Nia, um, I think the intent of the motion is actually more around the overall management of the Murray Darling Basin Plan, which I think we could all agree um, is, is fatally flawed. Um, so one project is not going to fix the Murray Darling, well, an, an extra consultation uh, on that project is not going to fix the Murray Darling Basin Plan, which definitely needs fixing. The alternative here um, to SDL projects, to water-saving projects, um, to sustaining the natural environment as, as these projects are designed to do, as councillor Moore said, researched and, and backed up um, by the, by the experts, by the scientists, by the First Nations peoples. Um, the alternative to that is the Commonwealth will just keep buying more water. It's as simple as that. Buying more water increases the cost of water, it increases farming costs, it increases food costs, and it increases the cost of living, as if that's not high enough at the moment. Um, there's no benefit in more consultation, the consultation has been done. Um, as councillor Moore said, let's move on with things that we, that we can influence, uh, and we can do something about. Um, this has been done and dusted, and I do not support this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have any other speakers? You have a right to reply now, councillor McKay?
How lucky for me, I am bitterly disappointed in councillor Moore and councillor King. Two weak cockies in the past who seem to willfully ignore the knowledge and experience of people who do know quite a lot about the river system and purport to say, and actually are supporting these projects by denying the community the opportunity to listen to them. All I'm asking for is that the communities of this region get an opportunity to give their feedback to council about these very heavily engineered projects. It's not a big ask, it's asking you to listen to your community, that's all. Not the wider basin plan, we may be able to change that these projects are instead of water. But certainly the community between here and Robben Vale, um, you know, would be able to advise about management of river flows. And that, those communities are pretty upset to realise that the Murray River Group of Councils trots off to Canberra and says these, these projects are fantastic and that they want them. Now, it's not in our management of the Murray Darling Basin Plan, or the Murray Darling Basin, whatever the council document. It's not in our document to support it. It's not in there. Now, so why do we go and support these projects via the Murray River Group of Councils? Because of how they fit into the scheme of the basin plan? Well, we've, no, none of our communities put them into the basin plan like that.
I have to go on the call.
None of our commi- none of our communities said that this was a good way to run the river system between here. And we are risking having fish deaths continue, black water continue, and cyanobacteria can, continue. So I'm bitterly disappointed because all I've asked for is that we have a let's talk forum and council have to take, just, just listen to the community and their perspectives about these projects. Because no matter how much propaganda the VMFRP have put out and how nice their brochures are, they are not representative of what the community think. And no independent ecologist support these projects.
Thank you. All right, I'll put the motion, those in favour, those against. The motion's lost. We have the next notice of motion from councillor Kelly. Could you read your motion, councillor Kelly?
I would like to move that council receives a report on options to establish a cash reserve where money from savings from our renewable energy initiatives goes back into the reserve. In that way, ring-fencing cost savings that we make, so that we can invest in a clean energy future.
All right, do I have a second for that motion? Yep, councillor McKay. Wish to speak to that councillor Kelly?
Yes, um, I attended the climate summit for local government last week. Um, and my report is the preamble for this motion. Uh, the motion comes out of ideas that I um, was able to gather at the, at the climate summit. Um, as I say here, the um, Cities Power Partnership put on the climate summit. And it was a gathering of local governments from all around Australia. Um, both councillors, mayors and staff. Uh, different councils sent different delegates. Um, it was very well organised, um, and pretty inspiring actually for the work that's being done. Cities Power Partnership um, have a document called Many Hands Make Polite Work, which is connecting governments to accelerate climate action. So with that, um, they brought councils together to explore what is being done at the moment. Well, first looking at what the problem is, what is being done by councils and what could be done in the future. So we saw presentations from a range of um, councillors and shires, as listed there. Um, we heard case studies, um, and the two keynote speakers were excellent. Um, Greg Mullins, who was a former Commissioner of Fire and Rescue New South Wales, and he's now a climate councillor. And his presentation was pretty emotional. Um, and he particularly mentioned um, the pyroconvective storms that are, that were a part of the terrible fires um, in recent years. And then David Coroly, uh, Professor Emeritus David Coroly, who I have, I have heard before. Um, so that was pretty um, incredible presentation of a lot of data and graphs and um, research um, on what is happening with um, the climate projections. Uh, so I, I, I really thank council for um, allowing me to go to this um, important summit. It was great to be there with, with councillors from our neighbouring councils. Um, and councillors from Western Australia and many other locations. Uh, we got to test drive an electric car vehicle and see a whole lot of other fleet vehicles. Um, there was even a hydrogen-powered rubbish truck, which could be the future. Um, I made a lot of new connections, um, networked and heard from energy and climate industry thought leaders as well as a lot of um, companies that are helping councils to adapt and mitigate. So as part of our, um, as part of what we can do in the future, um, we already are looking at how to invest in renewables. Um, part of our advocacy document seeks to um, increase funding um, to enable us to take advantage of our renewable energy potential in our region. And we certainly have to look at um, the risks involved in um, changing climate. Um, one of the um, award winners was Mitcham Council from South Australia, who have worked with um, Shine Hub, which um, and they won an award for uh, solar transformation and, and just getting um, seven hundred and fifty homes to join, put solar on their houses.
Half a minute for that, councillor Kelly?
So my, my report is self-evident and I hope people have read it. Um, but certainly climate change is happening right now and affecting everyone, it's a human issue. Local government holds the key to sustainable future. It's our responsibility for intergenerational equity, preparing our region for young people for the future. We don't, we want to be seen as um, a leader, not a laggard. So this motion appeals to um, the economics. Um, if we want to be able to adapt and get electrification, renewables, carbon sequestration,
Can you run up there councillor Kelly?
Then this reserve will help. Um, we already are gaining, gaining um, savings. And if we can put those savings back into an account, we can build that account and be able to do more um, ac- activities and projects in the future in line with our council plan.
Thank you. Councillor Kay?
Um, over many years we've been, our council has been achieving uh, savings by having solar on a lot of our buildings. And I think it would be really highly valuable for us and the community to understand how much money we have saved o- over the course of that period, whether it's just a, a general figure and not wanting to cause a huge amount of council work. But it would be good to keep an, an understanding of that ongoing uh, as a way to justify future projects. And I do think there is going to be an, large amounts of funding available for climate adaptation in the coming years. And it's, would see us in good stead to be prepared to have um, funds available to put towards those type of projects and applications. Otherwise, we will indeed miss out. Um, I do believe our council uh, does in principle support the um, BNIW transmitters to transmit solar energy out of us because, out of our area. Because we do have a enormous potential to create a lot of solar power. And we want to, you know, provide it to the rest of the state. Uh, but there's also, so there's a lot of um, things in our infrastructure that are stopping us, our citizens, achieving the savings and the benefits that they want to. But also in us being able to be an exporter of power. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers for? Speakers against? Councillor King?
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor, I'll speak against the motion. Um, and I'll note first up that the, the motion is nothing about adoption of solar or renewables. It is about establishing a cash reserve by ring-fencing cost savings. So I don't um, I don't support this motion for two main reasons, reasons. The suggestion is that savings made from renewable energy initiatives that have been adopted by council, solar panels, maybe in the future wind turbines and those, um, that these be ring-fenced, which is quarantining to use on further council energy saving initiatives. Is it practical to suggest that alleged savings on one particular area of council expenditure should be quarantined rather than be a contribution or a cost to the overall council budget? Because if we apply the same methodology to other areas of council expenditure or savings, then the following rules would apply. Rural ratepayers in, for example, the dryland farming zone, would have all of their contribution to rates allocated to rural road maintenance and renewal. Because based on the feedback that I receive, that's where they want their rate spent. The Pioneer Settlement, the art gallery and the library would be closed down. Because they are not financially sustainable in their own right. They come at a net cost to council and ratepayers for the combined benefit of the entire municipality. Although some may argue that point also, that's a future discussion. So if you ring-fenced these operations, they would be broke. Council's budget must be considered holistically and in its entirety and not in individual pieces. Secondly, uh, when we hear of cost savings from renewable energy initiatives, are we factoring in the whole of life or extended costs of renewable energy? Are the disposal costs associated with end-of-life solar panels, for example, which currently have very limited ability to be recycled and hence go to landfill? Have they been considered? The same applies with non-recyclable wind turbines, they go to landfill. The environmental cost associated with the destruction of native vegetation and fauna, including in areas adjacent to world heritage areas such as the Daintree Rainforest, offshore wind farms having detrimental effect on whale populations because of interruptions to their, to sonar? Has this been factored in? The human cost of well-documented child slave labour used to mine cobalt in the Congo for the sake of renewable energy, or enslaved Uraga Muslims manufacturing solar panels in remote areas of China? We can't u- we can't make a cash reserve on its own. The greater cost is a negative cost to the Australian economy. As our state and federal governments propel us on the fanciful path of net zero twenty thirty, all that is happening is our energy supply is becoming less reliable and our electricity is costing us more. So-called renewable energy is not cheaper and our electricity bills tell people that very clearly. I cannot support this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have any other speakers?
Councillor Moore? Yeah, thanks, Mr Mayor McPhee. Um, unlike a lot of councils, this council doesn't run around greenwashing everything it does. Um, over the last, at least six years, um, this council has signed up for the um, renewable energy initiative uh, to get our, get our power supplied by from renewable energy and has made considerable savings uh, in the process. Um, the mass, the More Australian Solar Homes Programme that was running, which I personally uh, helped promote within the, within the area, um, which was, uh, which saw that um, certain number of houses signed up. We got actually a free solar system for a uh, community organisation. So Vivid and SES were two organisations that benefit from that. Um, you know, this council has done a hu- huge amount over the, over the time. Uh, continual improvement in efficiency is the bread and butter of the CEO and the executive. If there's a cheaper way to do things and that, that means solar panels, putting solar panels on roofs and making things cheaper, we will do it. If we get electric cars, the CEO will make that decision, it's an operational decision. If it's cheaper to run electric cars, we will run them. Um, but that's an operational thing, so we, we're sort of leaning into operations. We're trying to be an electricity supplier generator. Um, I, I don't understand this quarantining uh, things, um. Community battery, we tried to get one up and running, couldn't get anybody to put into it. Um, couldn't get enough people to uh, actually interested in the area. So as I say, over the time, we've been a lot, we've been down this track. We've been doing as much as we can to uh, to get uh, the renewable energy uh, about the renewable energy run, we just haven't sort of greenwashed it and made us look like we've got these hugely green um, credentials. But we've done pretty much everything in here. Um, and as far as ring-fencing, I agree with councillor King, um, if the savings are there, they go into internal revenue. Um, everybody does them and um, I also agree with him, I too have, was at the VFF, Manan VFF. They want fifty percent of their rates put into roads, it's the prime service um, that they, they buy themselves, the council supplies. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Do I go? Councillor Young?
Yeah, I just um, wanted to say, um, I think it's fine in principle. But if you look at the community savings, that's where these savings all are. And ring-fencing the cost savings are not councils. They belong to a whole lot of segments of people that have done the initiatives, the organisations and the investors that have done it all. So practically, when you look at the cost savings being um, put back around, I don't think that's practical because they're not always councils.
All right, thank you. Councillor Jeffrey?
Well, I'll speak against the motion as well. Um, in my time at council, I counsel as councillor Moore's message, I've done a lot of work and went out with uh, fortunately enough to put ratepayers' money as well as grant money towards um, solar rechargeers, um, upgrades of buildings to make them more energy efficient. And that has come from the general rate, uh, ratepayer funds, whether it's from a surplus or process for the main, like come after budget, they have allowed us to do that and it will be identified in one way or another in our ten-year major project plan. So for no different to when councils sell the builder or broker land, the, and a part of that goes back into the general, general reserve in order to allow council to continue to, to undertake projects, no matter what the flow of that is. So I'm all on board with continuing to install solar panels, uh, upgrade buildings or more charges and other projects as well. But let's keep it in our general reserve money. Because on the other side of that is, the savings that are coming out of ratepayers' pockets. So they put, they might have put ten thousand dollars in order to upgrade some street lighting, but that won't pay itself for five to ten years depending on the return and any increase in electricity. So keep it general, let's keep up progress in our ten-year project, major project plan. And with the opportunity for grant funding that comes around as well. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Jeffrey. Just before you write a reply councillor Kelly, I have one question for you. It was talking about the savings from the new, how will you quantify those savings?
I would seek advice from more learned people than myself to be able to do that. I know that Ms Green has talked before about how much we've saved on certain power bills from certain building, that this was the power bill, then we got solar and now that's the power bill.
Oh, that's usually quantifying, I'm thinking about creek and all that sort of stuff, the saving costs that way. That's all, if you ever wrote a fine, have?
Thank you. Look, we, councillor King the other day brought up an issue about making a reserve for stormwater projects, basically. And I supported that. I mean, that's potentially a reserve where we use council funds from rates to pay for stormwater projects that we previously haven't had to pay for. So, you know, I don't think this is an unfair kind of idea. But look, it's about being progressive, it's about being a leader and an early adapter or a middle adapter rather than a laggard. I can see that council's, climate's effect on council's bottom line, which I've listed in my report, is quite extensive. The problem of not acting, the problem of not changing compared to the costs that are coming up towards us. There might be a greater outlay for things now, but in the end, there'll be savings. So councillor King's obtuse analogies, I think, were not helpful at all, but it did give him. And look, every time I bring up something to do with climate, it does give him an opportunity to bag out renewables and talk about, talk about his, doesn't believe that climate change is happening, et cetera, et cetera, the same old memes.
Let's not personalise the debate councillor Kelly.
The same old memes that we've heard before. Councillor Moore talking about greenwashing, this type of reserve.
Councillor Kelly, let's not personalise the debate, the reply is about issues raised.
Well, when anyone brings up the issue of greenwashing, I think we want to not be greenwashing. And this type of reserve would actually be able to do practical things that were not greenwashing. So it doesn't, when I bring up something to do with climate.
You finish that for councillor Kelly, your time's up?
He doesn't have to take it personally all the time. I'm not meaning that he hasn't done enough.
All right, time's up for the writer reply. Just remind council, we have got a big session today and I've got to stop watch down there now and make sure we keep to our times. If you know your times to speak to, you should be able to keep to them yourselves. I shouldn't have put you up. I will put the motion now, all those in favour. Against, the motion is lost. All right, next item is the foreshadowed items, we had no foreshadowed items. We've got urgent items not included in the agenda, councillors in? No, we'll move on to councillor reports. Councillor King?
Hopefully Matt has got it up there, thank you. Busy little month, standing here for the mayor on a couple of occasions with my group of councils in particular. Yeah, nothing sort of out of the ordinary over there, obviously getting around some community groups and opportunities to talk to the community at the end of football season in particular. All the football, netball finals have been particularly well attended across our municipality and surrounding municipalities. So it's great to get out and mingle with people in those opportunities. I was fortunate enough to be able to present to a class at McKillop College regarding an item they were doing on local issues and just how local issues can be reported to council. So if officers get a flurry of items coming through from the council website or from Snap Send Solve, then you can probably blame me, okay? Thanks very much, nothing further to report.
Okay, councillor Kelly, can you just hit the items?
Well, I, yep, I went to this climate summit, which many, many things will be able to come from that. Not just the one I put up today, but I learnt incredible amount of information. So once again, I want to thank council for allowing me to go to that. I'll make sure that you get your bang for your buck out of it. Look, there were a lot of things that everyone went to. I think the launches of the Legends of the Mally was really amazing and great work by Jessica and everyone down there. Finally to get that new presentation, which, you know, thinking more and more about the content of that. And last night I was out at the Lake Bogar Incorporated meeting and they put up their picture of what they're going to put on their silo and it's got the Catalina and now that I've seen the Legends of the Mally, I can understand more about what the Catalina and the significance of the museum out there is. Yeah, the Go North Arts Festival was wonderful, Women's Health Lunch, resident ratepayers' meeting. Ultima Coffee with a councillor was excellent and thank you to the people who talked to us out there. And great that it was a final of the Ultima Footy Club out there and that made pretty exciting time at the footy club there. And that's probably enough for me, thank you.
Councillor McKay?
Hi, sorry, I don't know why I said hi. I'm the 21st of August, so into the opening of Legends of the Mally as well. 23rd attended the Swan Hill District Health Celebration with Mary Anne Thomas, the Minister for Health. Thank you very much to the Victorian Labor Government and the federal government for funding our hospital, much appreciated. 2nd of the 9th attended Coffee with a Councillor at Ultima and the Football Club Final. Also went to the Go North Arts Festival, much to the delight of my daughter. 5th to the 9th had the Women's Health Lunch and 5th to the 9th the Boundary Ben Progress Association, thank you very much.
Thank you. Councillor Young?
Yes, I've been to various things, a couple of things I didn't, I just realised I haven't put on there with the Go North Arts Festival, which was a great event, but I think probably it's not held at the right time of year. We've had a lot more people there because of the football matches and things like that. But that also brings me to another issue is, I've been amazed when I've gone to the football and netball this year, just how many people are there, the cars, and that, I think we need to recognise that a bit more. How many people it also brings into our region from the other areas. Now we've got Kerrang and Kiuna playing here as well, we've got a whole lot more people shopping here. So I think it's a pretty good thing that needs to be recognised, that role that that pays. I went to Spark, which was the Suicide Wednesday down the park, which is quite well attended. It was a great day with all the different bands that appeared. And for the people who, as I have been through that situation with suicide in the family, it was wonderful to see that happening. Lake Bogar Inc meeting last night, as councillor Kelly said, they put their silo pictures up there and it's a great little community out there with the things that they've got happening. So that's about it, I think.
Thank you. Councillor Jeffrey?
I'll go on to report, thank you.
Councillor Moore?
A busy, quiet month. 78th, 78th board meeting, 78th Minister of Health Mary Anne Thomas, General of the Sod for the Swan Hill District Hospital, refurbishments and rebuilding there. Just really happy to see that get underway. 24th, the 8th INRT Board at the Pioneer Settlement and the Legends of the Mally show. 5th to the 9th Women's Health Shared Lunch at Mally's Place. 7th to the 9th, 23th Audit and Risk Committee meeting and it was a marathon effort that one. 7th to the 9th, 23th also Manang Tang VFF, where I did conduct a poll of what they wanted to act, what the most badly deserved service that they wanted to see and it was their roads. And that's where they suggested that up to 50% of their rates should go over roads. 15th to the 9th, Southwest Arts Board meeting and also the 10th to the 9th for Sparks, Suicide Wednesday at Riverside Park, where they came with full wallets and empty batteries. It was such a fantastic day there to see so many out supporting that cause, where they raised a significant amount of money for that particular project. Thank you Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Moore. There's a couple of things you can say there in the ministry I've been doing, involving. I'd just like to highlight the Robbale Mountain Festival, one up there was a terrific event run by the locals up there. And thanks should go to Jack Dan, he does a lot up there in that community. Not only does he own a neighborhood house, but he gets involved in a lot of community events right throughout that community. So he himself should be congratulated for the effort he does up there. First Responders Engagement Day, it's along the lines of what councillor Young spoke about mental health down at the park. Well, this is amongst, it's a heart to heart walk they had. They walked from the heart of Australia to the heart of Canberra, which is supposed to be our nation's capital and our parliamentary heart. So just to raise awareness and it's all about mental health. And just along the same lines, Nicole mentioned about Women's Health Week Lunch. She attended that along with a number of other councillors as well. I'd like to congratulate councillor McKay, she actually spoke at that and spoke very well about the need for, not only women I think, but everyone to look after our health and be aware of our bodies into the future. So that being said, we will close the council reports at that point in time. And we now need to go into camera, councillors, but prior to going to camera, there are a number of items, as people in the gallery and on the live stream can see, there are a number of reports for in camera. This is something that council takes seriously. We are open and transparent wherever we can be. Unfortunately, these things have to be made a decision at times in camera. And the reason for them going into camera can be seen there under section three of the local government act for each particular item. So those that are concerned about we're hiding things from you, we are not. Those are things that must be done in camera for those specific reasons. It's the first time in nearly 16 years on council I've seen this many in camera items in one meeting. So it's just ironic that they've all come up at the one time. But I'm just stressed to the community, we do not, definitely not hiding those intentionally and we do tend to be open and transparent. So thank you, I shall ask for someone for us to move, motion to go into camera. Move councillor Kelly, seconded councillor Jeffrey, all in favour. Carry, we all just stay seated while the live stream is ceased.